Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we formally welcome Ms. Mimi Latrell to the Planning Board.
Motion's been made?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Mr. Stein.
I think that Mimi is going to be a fantastic addition to the board, and she certainly has put in lots of time at Planning Board meetings. She's probably been to more meetings than I have, so maybe she'll teach me a thing or two.
Mr. Jenks.
Amen, and welcome, Mimi, and I'm sure you're going to be a great addition.
Mr. Mills.
Again, welcome, Mimi. Great run campaign. I think the voters spoke loudly and clearly, and welcome to the board. Happy to have you there.
I will say that we will certainly miss Mrs. Bartolini and her unique and special qualifications that she brought to the board for all those years, and certainly welcome Mrs. Latrell, who brings unique and special qualifications also, and certainly worked hard to get elected. So, motion's been made in second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Four to zero, she's officially welcomed to the Planning Board.
Mr. Chairman, I believe, is still on the floor.
Mr. Mills.
As our first order of business for this evening, I would like to nominate Mr. Moros as chairman of the Planning Board.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero, to zero. No, to one. Thank you very much. Mr. Stein.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Andrew Mills as vice chair of the Planning Board.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Four to zero, to one. We have other appointments. It's in our packet, and just want to guide us a little bit through that. Have to find it first. So, we have, on the first page, no one. Is that correct? Other than the Planning Board members. And we go to page... Page two, we have one item, which is the Public Works Planning Board, that does not have to be accomplished tonight, and I would recommend that we move that to our next meeting, if that's okay? And the reason would be that I think that the...unless the board feels ready, I think that there may be some fresh information that we want to make sure that we have, if there is any. That one's not as time-sensitive as the ones that are coming up, but we do have to do that. Then on page X, we have three items there. We have Mrs. Bartolini on the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and would respectfully suggest that she remain in that position, and we don't do that appointment, I believe. The other one is the Metro West Regional Collaborative. Mrs. Bartolini...and then the third one is the Metro West Regional Transit Authority. Again, Mrs. Bartolini is expected and is willing to serve on that. So, the only one that would require a Planning Board member, other than to replace Mrs. Bartolini on the Metro West Regional Collaborative. Is there anybody interested in that? So, Mr. Mills, are you going to nominate Mrs. Latrell for that one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to nominate Mimi Latrell for the Metro West Collaborative, Regional Collaborative.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Mrs. Latrell.
What is that?
Not to worry, we'll fill you in later. Motion's been made in second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Four to zero, to one, and I believe...there's one other. Transportation Task Force.
Doesn't have a select means. Doesn't say by the planning board.
Right. And maybe, let's see, with the color, yeah. Okay, so we're done with those items? Very good. Thank you. Thank you for being voluntold for that position, Mrs. Latrell. Sometimes during the year, if things change, others can be appointed to replace the initial appointee. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the bond release, Parmento Meadows, Metcalf Lane. We have one piece of correspondence from the town, which is in our packet today. It's from the DPW director, Mrs. Gallagher. It's dated Tuesday, May 10th, 6:29 PM, and it was sent to Hillary. Hillary, DPW, was all set with Metcalf. We don't object to releasing the bond. Thanks, Karen Gallagher, DPW superintendent. I know there was a question on this today relative to the bounds, and I know that...I see Mr. Stevens is here, so you want to come up, Ben, and subject yourself to questions? Or tell us what you think is open, or why we need to do this, release the bond?
I think everything is closed up. We actually had it closed up last year, so this is the holdover bond, the 12-month-after road acceptance. But if I recall, everything was accomplished about a year ago. On the road, the bounds were checked, the open space bounds were put in, they were checked, and there was nothing outstanding from the last, about a year ago, when we started the 10 percent bond.
Very good. Open it up to the board. Mr. Mills.
No questions.
Mr. Jenks.
This is the 10 percent.
This is...the road's been accepted. It was maintained last year by the town through last winter, and we had a meeting probably about 12 months ago, in which we had the final sign-off on the road, but there was a new policy in which 10 percent of the original bond was being held for one year after acceptance. This is that one year.
No questions.
Mr. Stein.
No questions.
Mrs. Latrell.
So, the open space signage has been installed?
Yes, it has.
That's it.
Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we release the remainder of the bond for the Parmento Meadows, Metcalf Lane, based on the request of Mr. Stevens.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero.
Thank you.
Very good, Ben. Thank you. I see now we are ahead of schedule. Don't get to say that too often. So, the next item on the agenda at 7:15 is the discussion, conversion of single-family home to two-family home, 68 Flag Road, and then, following that, similar discussion for 70 Flag Road. In the next two minutes, if anybody has anything they want to say or do? Mr. Mills.
Make a motion for a two-minute recess.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five to zero. Planning Board's back in session. The next item on the agenda, which I read a minute ago, two minutes ago, is conversion of a single-family home to two-family home, 68 Flag Road. Jack Bartolini. Jack, the item right after that is 70 Flag Road. Did you want to combine that discussion?
I would like to combine them both because they're side by side.
Mike's got to get the mic.
I would like to combine them both because they are side by side, and they are hand in hand.
Let me ask the board if they want to do that, Mr. Mills.
I would not oppose that.
Mr. Jenks.
Yes.
Mr. Stein.
I have no objection.
Mrs. Latrell.
No objection.
So, we'll combine the discussion, but if at 7:30, someone from the public or anywhere else comes in, then we'd just have to redo that portion. Before I turn it over to you, I just want to...in your application, you correctly stated that the zoning district is industrial. If you go to the town code for the industrial district, which is 174-8.7, industrial district, Section C, which you refer to, uses requiring a special permit are as follows. And then, number three, is conversion of one-family house in existence for two years or longer to a two-family dwelling on a lot with a minimum of 15,000 square feet. And then, the action that the board is working, is...has in front of us tonight, is under 174-9 is special permit requirements. 9G...try to read it quickly. "Two-family dwelling, the conversion of a one-family house which has been in existence for two years or longer to a two-family dwelling is allowed by special permit from the Board of Appeals. The application will be considered after receipt of a report, or after 35 days elapsed. Without such a report, from the Board of Health certifying that adequate provisions have been made in accordance with the requirements of the Board of Health for drainage and the disposal of sewage and waste generated by the occupancy of the two-family dwelling. There shall also be a report from the Planning Board," that's what we're here for tonight, "describing the lot on which the dwelling is located, the neighborhood where it is located, and the effects of the proposed two-family dwelling thereon, the adequacy of ingress and egress provisions, any recommendations by the Planning Board as to the advisability of granting the special permit, and any restrictions that should be imposed as conditions thereof, and the provisions for off-street parking in a manner consistent with the character of the premises. If the decision of the Board of Appeals differs from the recommendations of the Planning Board, the reasons therefore shall be stated in the decision. The two-family dwelling shall comply with the following conditions and requirements." And there's three conditions. One, the lot on which a one-family residence is to be converted to a two-family dwelling must be a minimum of 15,000 square feet. Two, there must be no other apartment on the lot on which the two-family residence is proposed. And three, not more than the required minimum exterior alterations have been or will be made to the one-family house and to any accessory buildings, and the site plan of the lot and floor plans of the dwelling thereon must be filed with the building inspector prior to the application to the Board of Appeals. Good evening, Jack.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name, for the record, is John Bartolini Jr. I live at 4 Y S Circle here in South Bro, and I'm the owner of the property on 68 and 70 Flag Road. Just for the record, I also own this piece of here, this garage, this two-family, this two-family, and Wendy's.
Right after the part about who you were? No, the camera didn't...can you go back to that, Terry? The map? There you go.
You got it?
Yeah, now describe what you...
Well, currently, just for an overview here, I own this section of property in here. It's 68 Flag Road, 70 Flag Road. That's why I wanted to combine this meeting. I also own 66 Flag Road, 72 Flag Road, this garage, and Wendy's. Currently, this piece of property is an existing one-family house, and also an existing one-family house here. They are both side by side. And what I'm going to do is show you how I meet the requirements for this permit. The property here on 68 has three acres of land, so it certainly meets the 15,000-square-foot requirement. 70 Flag Road has eight acre...has one acre of land. What I have here for an overview is Flag Road is up here, where we get our entrance. Route 9 is here. We're very close to Route 9. My abutters are Central Motors, Middlesex Body Shop and Auto Body Repair, Wendy's. And then up here on Flag Road, the nearest abutters are a garage warehouse, a two-family conversion that was converted several years ago, another two-family that was converted several years ago. To this side over here are commercial buildings. I believe one of them is Clark University, but I'm not positive. And then over here is Crawford's, who actually live way over here, and this land is wetland. And then the Lapto which, a property which used to be the South Bro Dairy, and there is a house here with a two-car garage, and then there is an outbuilding that I believe is used by landscapers. All of this property is industrial zoned. What I hear here is an existing common driveway that feeds both these houses. That won't be changed. I've spoken with the fire chief, I've gone...he's reviewed this. I've also spoken with the building inspector. He's reviewed it. The fire chief is okay. He feels this will service both the ladder truck and any emergency vehicles that may have to go down there. The area around here is...there is a grassed area along both sides of the road here. This is lawn. There are some trees here. There are some trees here. There is a wetland in this area here, and grassed area here. In the front yard, there are septic systems, both located in the front yard. I've also spoken with the Board of Health, and they have no problems with this being changed either. So, there is a minimal amount of changes being done to both of these properties. They are existing garage on each one of these properties, a two-car garage, and what I do is plan to raise the roof on both of these and add a second story, and...so essentially what I'm going to do is add a second story in here. And what it'll do is, I will have...I will make a living room, dining room, kitchen area, open floor plan, half-bath, two bedrooms upstairs with two bathrooms in this area here. I will do that on both of them. It will be...it's negligible what will happen. The outside minimum of landscaping has to be disturbed. I'm not doing anything in the rear. We are adding a deck in the rear, but I'm not doing any excavation or any whatsoever excavation. I am adding three parking spaces in the front here. I'm providing parking on 68 Flag Road for three vehicles here, and three vehicles here. On 70 Flag Road and the existing driveway, which is a little bit larger, I'm adding four vehicles here, which is easy access. That far exceeds the requirements for parking for apartments, as being in a butter to some of these 40Bs. I found out it's kind of small. It's like 1.7 per unit. But anyway...the landscaping is essentially going to remain the same. Like I said, there are trees here. There are some trees here, wooded area, but essentially, most of this is grassed, and then there is a wooded area in the back, and then some wetlands. I believe I meet all the requirements that are necessary. There's very minor impact to the neighborhood. The access and egress is not going to change. It'll remain the same, and the fire chief feels that it is sufficient. There's sufficient line of sight here, and in general, I'm really kind of bumped up against Route 9 here, which is our biggest abutter. So, again, just to recap, we make the 15,000 square feet. It also requires that no other apartment or no other unit beyond the lot. There aren't. And minimum exterior alterations, and that's very minimal. I believe it's less than 20 percent. It's around 18 percent.
Very good. I'll open it up to the board. Mr. Mills.
Thank you, Jack. Can you describe a little bit more on the parking on, I think it's 68? Are those spots, are they going to pull straight in, of the new spots that you're making?
These spots here, what I anticipated, there's enough room here to turn around, and then I made some room here, so that you can turn around and either back around this way and go out, or come around this way and turn around. But I just felt that it would be better to have this unit have its parking here, and this unit have its parking here. On this one, it's a little bit different, where everybody can back out and go out this way. It's a little bigger driveway in this area here. So, two and two here with the walkway going up that way.
But the...for 68, are those spots, are they going to be...are they going to pull in facing the building?
They could pull in facing in, or they could drive down here, turn around, and come back and park there.
So, they're not going to be parallel to the street? They're going to pull in straight?
No, they're going to be...they're going to be parallel parked.
They'll be parallel parked.
Right. I mean, I could put a turnaround in there if I wanted, but I didn't want to pave the moor area or dig it up.
But you are going to put...so it's going to be enough off the streets or off the common driveway?
Oh, yeah, so that...
So, they're completely off?
Yeah.
Okay. No more questions.
Mr. Jenks.
Jack, the lot that I think you said has a garage on it?
Right.
And is that connected to the lot out on Route 9?
It is.
And what is...what is the connection? Is it usable, or...
Well, it has nothing to do with these houses here. I mean, there's no connection to these houses. It's all separate.
Okay, so the...
So, if you're asking if these can get out to here, the answer is no.
No, I was thinking more of the driveway for the two houses. Is that also encumbered by the garage and the others?
No, no. All right, I see what you're saying is this...no, this driveway comes in this way.
Oh, and from the...
Right.
The common driveway has been in existence for years.
Yes.
And the...there are two septic systems?
Yes.
And the Board of Health has okayed the capacity of those for two-family homes?
Yes.
No questions?
Mr. Stein.
What is the current square footage, the number of bedrooms in each house?
Currently...that's a good question. Currently, in this...let's see if I can get the...there's the opposite side. Currently, this house here, I think, is roughly around 1,500 square feet.
How many beds?
There are three bedrooms in it now.
There are three bedrooms in it now. One of them's going to be removed, so it'll become a two-bedroom unit. And this will also become a two-bedroom unit. Septic system was designed for four bedrooms.
So, sorry, before you move on, the new unit is going to have two bedrooms?
Two bedrooms.
How many, what's the gross living area, square feet?
Uh, Jesus. I want to say about twelve hundred square feet. Twelve to thirteen hundred.
Yeah. It looks, I mean, the image suggests that it's going to be somewhat smaller than the...
This unit is, it's funny how they have, it's smaller, but it lays out pretty nice. The rooms are going to be fairly decent sized and everything.
So if you're converting the current single to a, like, has that been a family traditionally, I assume?
Well, I've been this...
Three or four people living in the, in the current house?
Well, currently, one of them is empty now, but the, the...
Just trying to get a sense of what the, you know, how the population, what are we adding in terms of...
You're adding less kids, actually, if you really...
Oh, I'm just saying.
But it's, what happens is, right now, there's, there are two adults and one child in seventy right now. The chances are that probably, those will probably be the same. This will probably have two adults in it.
And obviously, that's the same for both.
Yeah, it'd be about the same for both.
Because you're not doing anything different. You're doing basically exactly the project twice.
I can't, I can't tell you no, who to rent for or anything.
Oh, no, no. But it just, in terms of what you're building, it's the same thing on both, so...
Right. It's the same thing. There's very minimal impact as to the number of people. The number, actually, number of cars will probably stay the same.
Thank you.
Mrs. Luttrell.
Nice project. Adds to the diversity of housing in town. I have no questions.
Okay, so the, Mr. Jenks asked if you, and I think you said you had no, you had no problem from the Board of Health. Do we, I just went through the stuff here to see if I missed it. I didn't see anything from any of the others. The...
The fire chief said if you require a letter, that he would, he would write one. The Board of Health doesn't actually answer to you guys. They would either write me a letter, or they write the planning board a letter, or they can just sit pat and not do anything, and just let it go through. Like, you, as you know, I've done this before, and I think once they wrote a letter and once they did nothing, so... But they have, I mean, I talked with Dennis Castello about this.
So is it, if it's the boards, if there's a motion to recommend to write the report, there shall also be a report from the planning board describing, and then there's a thing that we have to do here, the adequacy and all of that. So if there's a motion to do that, I would suggest that included in that motion would be, that it would be subject to, you know, the recommendation of the Board of Health and public safety.
The Board of Health has their own recommendation to the ZBA.
Right, but I don't want to have the planning board in a situation right now where we don't, we don't, we're relying on what you're saying that the Board of Health, how they feel about it. So what I'm, what I'm saying is that if, if we go ahead and make this recommendation that everything's fine, and then we find out later on that it's not, then it puts the ZBA, I don't know, in a situation where, where they, they're not quite sure what to do or who to believe. So maybe I'll restate it, that, that if we recommend this to the ZBA, that it's based on our understanding of what you said, that public safety, Board of Health, is fine. Is that, I'm just putting that out to the board. So if anybody wants to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Mills.
Make a motion that we write a report to the ZBA for the purpose of conversion of sixty-eight Flag Road and Seventy Flag Road. And we have to go, we're going to go through each one of those questions? Is that like we do before, or are we...
No, I think we covered, I think we covered all of those things. It had to do with the, has to do with the lot, describing the lot on which the dwelling is located. There's no, there's no issue with that. The neighborhood word is located, we know that. Effects of the proposed two-family dwelling thereon, the adequacy of ingress and egress provisions, I believe Jack went through that with us, any recommendations by the planning board as to the advisability of granting the special permit, and any restrictions that should be imposed as conditions thereof, and the provisions for off-street parking in a manner consistent with the character of the premises. So I think we went through all of that. I didn't hear any questions or comments, or negative comments. So I think the report would, would be pretty short stating that the board feels that the proposal is consistent with and not conflicting with the items that we're asked to look at.
Agreed.
So that's, that's your part of the motion?
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Very good. It's now seven thirty-eight. We don't see anybody else come in relative to the seven thirty part of this agenda item, which was the number seventy Flag Road. So based on that, I think we complied with following the agenda. And that puts us back ahead of schedule. Mr. Mills.
Motion for a two-minute recess.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero. Planning board's back in session. It's now seven forty-five. See, the next item on the agenda is discussion, bond release, Parkerville Heights, Fox Hill Drive. Mr. Bartolini. Microphone, please.
We've had a bond on, actually, it's a cash CD with the Town of South Row for quite a few years.
You're not on...
Hold on.
Hey, Green.
All right. We've had a bond, a CD with the Town of South Row for quite a few years. And actually, it's kind of funny. Brian, it came to roll over, and Brian knew that the road got accepted by a town meeting, so he came up and asked Hillary, do I release, do we keep doing this, or do we give the money back to Jack? So I guess I'm here to get the money back for Bartolini Builders, and I believe it's fifty thousand dollars.
I'll ask the board, did you, did anyone see anything in our packets relative to this other than the, than the agenda item?
I did not. Yeah, Mimi is just...
An email from Hillary.
Do you have it, Phil?
Yep.
Could you read it, please?
From Hillary to the planning board members. Except Mimi. Bond releases, hello. Parmenter Meadows slash Metcalf Lane has requested a final bond release of all funds currently being held by the planning board. Fosse &amp; O'Neil has conducted an inspection and has no issues with releasing the final bond amount. If at all possible, could you swing by Parmenter Road before the meeting to judge for yourself? Also, Jack Bartolini posted a fifty thousand dollar CD as bond for Parkerville Heights slash Fox Hill Lane in June two thousand and five. The bond has matured, and he is looking to have the funds returned to him. Brian Bellatane, Valentine, excuse me, Town Treasurer slash Collector has been allowing Jack to take the interest accrued on the CD, so the value is just fifty thousand. I explained to Jack that the planning board policy regarding final bond release for the last ten to fifteen years or so, under Aldo's advice, has been to hold ten percent of the original amount for one year after the road has been accepted by the town against damage and loss of street trees. In this case, that would be five thousand dollars to be held until spring of two thousand and seventeen. Jack claims that there are no street trees because the subdivision was approved in nineteen eighty-five, prior to the requirements for street trees in subdivisions. Also, since the road was built in two thousand and five, it has already proven it will hold up. Discussion regarding this bond release will be on the agenda for, for the May sixteenth meeting.
Thank you. I do remember in nineteen eighty-five that it, there were no street trees.
Correct.
So I think the chairman at the time asked you to plant some, and you pointed out that it wasn't required and that there were quite a few trees already there that you didn't cut down to make the subdivision. And then that road has been down there for a while, more than, certainly more than a year or two. So I can, I can agree with you on those items, Jack, as far as reasons for... I can agree with you on those items, Jack, as far as reasons for, that the town usually holds the 10% for a year. So I don't have a problem releasing the whole amount, but I'd like to certainly hear from the board. I don't think, I think the board has the ability to, to, you know, look at the circumstances and not apply something that's not applicable to your condition. Mr. Mills.
So from a process standpoint, having just had Mr. Stevens in here, where we did hold the 10% before, I just look for us to be consistent across the board. However, you know, like you said, Mr. Chairman, since this road has been in existence for quite some time, however just accepted, I'm willing to, I think the situation warrants special consideration. And I think we've held on to the money long enough. So I'd be, I would not be opposed to releasing the whole thing.
Mr. Jenks.
I am in agreement with that.
Mr. Stein.
I have no objection to releasing the full amount.
Ms. Luttrell.
So the road that's there has been there since 2005?
2005, 2006, something like that.
Okay, I drove up there, it looks, looks new to me. Yeah, I have no objection to releasing the bond.
Mr. Mills.
So Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we release the remaining of the bond for Parkerville Heights/Fox Hill Drive to Bartolini builders as requested by the applicant.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All in favor? We'll notify Brian through Hillary and they'll do their thing.
Go to the bank. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the planner's report. I will do my piece of that, which is the next scheduled meeting is June 6th. There's no items on the agenda yet. And question is, do we want to continue to hold that date? I would recommend that we do in case something comes in. And also, if nothing comes in, the agenda being wide open, we, the board could use that meeting night to set some goals, go over our meeting minutes. Number of meeting minutes that have not been voted on by the planning board. Or any, anything else that we could do as far as working. And then if the board decides not to do that, we can always just not post the agenda for June 6th. But I'd like to kind of have that still on the table if, if we'd like to use that, that night. Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with that. I think we should keep the night open in case anything comes in and I can use it for planning. I know we're still not sure if we're going to discuss it tonight, but we do have to discuss the open space on Pine Hill that we were discussing right before town meeting.
Sure. Mr. Jenks.
Agreed.
Mr. Stein.
It's in my calendar.
All right. Mrs. Luttrell.
Agreed.
Okay, so just have Hillary, actually Hillary won't be here for that, prior to that meeting. And then the meeting after that is scheduled for June 20th, and we do have an item on that agenda. I think you've received the email notifying us that Park Central has submitted what they call a residual site plan. I think at least one of the planning board members has picked up that plan. So that's on the, that's going to be on the agenda on June 20th. And then following that is, scheduled meeting is July 18th. Does that, at this point, is July 18th still a good date?
That date's open for me.
So no conflicts with June 20th or July 18th at this time? Mr. Jenks, Mr. Stein.
I'm checking July 18, Mr. Mars. And I am okay on July 18.
Mimi.
That's fine with me also.
Good. Okay, anything else on the planner's report, anybody else want to? Mr. Mills.
Do we have an update on a potential new town planner?
We have three, three interviews on Thursday, Wednesday of this week. That's your update.
Happy to hear it's still moving along. Do we, the discussion we had before town meeting about the open space, I think it was on Pine Hill with all as far as inviting, actually it was Pine Hill and
Actually, it was Pine Hill and off of Richards Road, the two proponents for the open space had to had indicated that those warrant articles should be pulled so that they could move along with third party ownership of those parcels. So yeah, maybe we'll invite them in for the June 6th meeting. And if that doesn't work for them, or for both, or either one, then we would invite them to attend on June 20th so that we can continue to be updated on that progress. And if there is a lack of progress, to take whatever action we need to do to keep it going in that direction.
Can we have, when Hillary notifies them, can she be specific? I think we were looking for a deed restriction was the term, I think we were discussing. That that was what they were extending their timeframe for. So I don't want to them to come in and think that there's something else, or present something else when we're all under one assumption.
Right, we'll try to make it clear on the agenda the, in a little bit more detail as to what the, the action that night would be relative to the kind of the open actions on those two pieces of open space. Whether it's a deed restriction or some other type of conservation restriction. And, and who is preparing that language and, and the status and the timetable and all of that.
Sounds good.
Anything else on that? Approval of minutes is the next item. We have in our packet the April 25th minutes if if you want to take a minute to look them over again. This was relatively recent.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mills.
Destiny, does, does April 25th incorporate everything that Kathy had given for notes?
Mr. Chairman. I just remembered something for the planner's report, is it too late? Can we go back to that for one second?
Unlike some other boards in town, we have maximum flexibility here. We'd be glad to go back to that item.
So we had for our deed research project, which was a CPC funded initiative, a working group, which consisted of Mr. Mills, myself, Mimi Luttrell, and Frederica Gillespie are the Open Space Commission representatives on that working group. As a result of Mrs. Luttrell's election to the planning board, in the interest of having two planning board members on that working group, it'll be myself and Mrs. Luttrell. Mr. Mills has graciously agreed to take a step away from that working group at this point. And I believe the Open Space Commission representatives will be Frederica Gillespie and Mimi, do you know is it Kathy Brockio? Lisa Brockio?
I think so.
Okay. So that would be my update as far as that project at this point.
Could, for the purpose of our minutes, when you, when you find out who that second open space commission person is, send that over to Hillary.
I'm 99% certain it's Lisa Brockio.
Lisa?
Yeah.
All right, we'll put that in the minutes so that the public knows who the, who the working group is.
We have not met since Mr. Mills was part of it, so. And there has been no meeting, I think, in several months on that working group, so.
Well, we have not met since you just mentioned the change. We met before.
Right, well, I've tried, I think that that, the last time the working group met was actually when we had the joint meeting with the Open Space Commission here. And they presented during a planning board meeting, so. There's been no meetings since then, that's, that was my point. Thank you.
This April 25th meeting was a long one. And during that meeting, the St. Mark's Solar site plan was reviewed and the six and eight Turnpike Road site plan was reviewed and approved. Which took a long time, but we got through it.
Destiny, do you have one correction? Destiny, I have. So Row 88. So as Mr. Mills stated, when standing on the top rung, there was, there was this it was a second from the top. Well, I, I mean, not to be picky, but I specifically stood to get eye level with the balloons to begin with. And I don't want people to think that I went above and beyond what the fence or the height of the solar array was supposed to be.
Any other questions or comments? I'll note that because of the lateness of the hour, we sent Destiny home in, at the same time that Mrs. Bartolini left the meeting because she had recused herself from the, any discussion on the Park Central project. So you'll see in the minutes that there's a section here that I provided based on my memory of that discussion relative to the independent council. So if you want to reread that and make sure that I got it right, because when Destiny submitted these minutes through Hillary, I asked Hillary to bring them up on the, on the screen and then we added that section. Right? Did I have the, the people that made the motion and seconded it in the voting correct?
So you were opposed or?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I thought you abstained.
Well, if, if Mrs. Bartolini submitted, I'd like to get these, if, if we can, get them voted on. And then if we have to bring them back, if there's additional information from Mrs. Bartolini, then we'll, we can adjust them. Mr. Jenks.
I have some comments on page one, line 28. Begins with the word "plan." Plan which now detailed the nine freestanding 15-foot-high poles. Two wall-mounted signs proposed for each business. I, my memory is that it's a total of two signs, one for each of the businesses. Okay. On page three, line 107. I think after the third word, resident, it would clarify to say, "asked what is an example." On line 118, at the end it says, "and they will be immediately notified." It's not clear who that refers to. I think it means St. Mark's will be immediately notified? No. Solar City? Okay, I I felt it wasn't clear. On the next page, line 151, says, "since the solar array was part of the approved Dover amendment for educational learning, learnings at the school, the project can't be denied." The, the solar array was approved by our ZBA under the Dover amendment. They, they felt that because St. Mark's was going to use this for teaching, that it fell under the Dover amendment. Down at 166, Mr. Fox again requesting the, that's, that's just surety, S-U-R-I-T-Y. The surety bond be waived. And that appears again on the next page on line 194. Up above 194 on 188, agreement to coordinate with DPW to repair any residential property, town property. That, that could be read that we're saying DPW will repair? And, and it's just that it will be coordinated, repairs will be coordinated with DPW. That's it.
I had no changes.
Mr. Mills.
Mr. Mills.
Make a motion, we, we accept the April 25th, 2016 meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
Second? Most has been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero to zero. Mrs. Latrell was not there. Very good. Move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the discussion of independent counsel. Included in those minutes that we just approved was that discussion and the vote by the board to have our, the town planners, January seventh request, letter to the selectmen requesting independent counsel relative to guiding the planning board through the Park Central project in front of the ZBA. Again, this request had to do, has to do with independent counsel providing guidance to the planning board, not on the merits of the project, but on the process that's occurred and that's not yet occurred. So, that letter went to the selectmen on January seventh. The planning board subsequently asked them to put that on hold. And then after our April twenty-fifth meeting, the planning board asked that it be brought back onto the table at their next meeting. It's been placed on the selectmen's agenda for tomorrow night at six-thirty. The planning board has a, it's a joint meeting, so our, a meeting is again posted, properly posted for us to be there tomorrow night at six-thirty, at which time the selectmen will consider, hopefully, our request for independent counsel. So, today I received an email from the town administrator asking for two items. One is, what funding source would we use to pay for the independent counsel? And the second is, what would be the scope of work for the independent counsel? So, I've already indicated that there are, I don't have the exact dollar amount, but I can get that by tomorrow, that would be available from the planning board's budget. As we know, because the town planner left, there's a considerable amount of salary that was funded but won't be used because we haven't filled that position. That's one source that we would gladly use for paying for independent counsel. And then the second item is a list of tasks or questions and concerns that we've, have in front of us or that I will read if you'd like. And I'd like to get that to the selectmen tomorrow before noon time so they'll have an opportunity to have it before the meeting. And, you know, at the meeting, it wouldn't be the first time that they see it. They'd have an opportunity to look at them and see if it's a valid, it's part of a valid request. So, open it up to the board if anybody has any comments or questions about what I just said. Mr. Stein?
So, Mr. Morse, do we want to go through some of the questions at this point? Or is that something that you were going to come up with? How do, what is being submitted, I suppose, as far as?
I don't have a problem going through them. It's not a huge task. But as I've stated before, that if you ask, if part of the scope of work is to ask a question, for example, I'll just use, I'm not even sure if this is in the list, but I do have it here. Is, does the, we've been saying for months, if not longer, that we feel, the planning board feels that the zoning board of appeals has overreached into the planning board's authority, especially in regard to waiving the site plan, which was waived under the special, under the use variance. That's one question that could be asked. Another one is that additional waivers were granted back in late March. And those, the ZBA waived requirements that are under the planning board's jurisdiction as the special permit granting authority. So, a question could be, is, has the zoning board of appeals overreached beyond their authority by waiving certain things? Whether they're, go through the whole list of things and ask special counsel to go through all of those items that were waived and ask to what extent the ZBA had authority relative to each of them? Or if we identify specific ones, like lower impact development? And then if, if the answer, if special counsel's response is in his or her opinion that the ZBA has overreached beyond their authority, then that would trigger what I would expect special counsel to say. What is the remedy? So, some of the initial questions may lead to additional items that would be in the special counsel's task.
Okay. So, for tomorrow night, I've thought we would be more or less confi, you know, presenting what questions we, you know, what we want the special counsel to be focusing on initially and not so much on future steps? Or is that inherently like a requirement that we address? What we deal with the results? I mean, we don't know what the results will be yet, so.
Right. But if the task was to ask special counsel, did the zoning, in your opinion, did the zoning board of appeals overreach into the planning board's authority? And the answer is yes. We would want some guidance relative to what, if any corrective measures should be taken? Or that counsel may say, "They did overreach, but it's unprecedented, and we don't know what to do."
Right.
I just want to, I just want to not limit the scope of work to just those items that we may identify. Because depending on the answer to that, any one of those items, it may trigger additional things for us to be guided, for us to be, you know, advised on. So that if we, we're asking questions because we feel that there's a problem. If a problem is identified, then we would expect to have a recommended solution. And then, of course, yes, Mr. Jenks?
As you know, I voted against making this request. And I did that on procedural grounds because I believe the process should be to go to town council and talk about the issues that we have. And I would expect if the town council saw issues that he would be uncomfortable advising us about, he would recommend that we seek special counsel. The board having voted to go ahead with that recommendation anyway, I will enthusiastically support the board's request for special counsel, with my apology to town council for it going this way. Having said that, the question about things that have happened in the past, things that we feel are overreaching from the use variance, for instance. I would propose, starting with the question, if in fact the zoning board has overreached, is there a remedy? I think, I feel very comfortable in saying that they've overreached. I don't say that out of a lot of legal knowledge about that. It just seems to me that everything points to that. So, I'd be more interested in hearing, is there a remedy? Because if there's not, then it's time to move on. If there is, then the question is, well, what is it? And do we want to go down that road? I'm, I'm more concerned with the things that happened at the March twenty-fourth meeting of the ZBA and their whole list of new waivers. I mean, this, this just goes on and on and on, and it's, it's got to stop. I, I was thinking back, I, I can't remember seeing or hearing of a waiver request that the developer has made that's been turned down for any reason. It, I, I looked again at the Southborough Access Media replay of that March twenty-fourth meeting, and there was at least one of the requests for a waiver that just absolutely wasn't even discussed. The engineer presented it, a motion was made to approve it, the vote was unanimous, and they moved on to the next one. I would not suggest that we want to ask special counsel any question that could be answered by reviewing regs. Like, well, let me, let me say it the other way around. One of the questions I'm very interested in asking is, what can the developer with the approval of the zoning board include from the townhouse project under the regulations of the affordable housing project? They're clearly proposing to do that on many items. Some of it was proposed and voted on in the use variance. Even more of it now raised in the March twenty-fourth meeting. And to me, that's the most important question that we have, that we should get answered, is where does that end? How much can they keep pulling out of the normal Southborough regulations and saying, yes, it affects the townhouse, but we think it also affects the affordable housing, and therefore, we're going to include it under the theory of an integrated site development under the forty-B regulations? So, I would ask that question. And I would think it appropriate to give the selectmen two or three typical questions. And the statement of the scope of work being research on this type of question. I suspect the board of selectmen is concerned, well, does the planning, planning board want special counsel because they want to sue the zoning board or file some kind of an appeal? So, I think I would make it clear that our concern is, at least at this time, research. The answer to some questions about the process and procedure that would either put us in a position of saying, okay, that's the way it is, let's move on, or saying, okay, they shouldn't be doing it that way. What can we do to get them to the table to negotiate the correct way? And that's how I would define our scope of work. I don't think we have to list ten questions for the selectmen. I, I don't think they're going to put themselves in our shoes and try to determine whether our questions are valid because if they do that and come up with the wrong answer, then they're holding the bag. So, I don't expect that. I think they just want to know the tenor. They want to know where we're, what we're trying to find out, what kind of issues we would like answers to. So, my suggestion is just list two, three, four questions. And I, I would make them questions that really need counsel, be it special counsel, or if Aldo is comfortable answering the questions, that should be fine, too.
Thank you very much, Phil. Mr. Mills?
I agree with you both. And Phil, I think, I think you're correct in that we should give at least, and I think, Mr. Chairman, you were saying this, too, you give, give a, an example of a question and show how it could lead to follow-up that would require more, more research. So, I wouldn't, and that the scope is specifically where the zoning board of appeals might have overstepped their bounds into our authority. And that's it. In this case, I think maybe less is going to be more. My opinion.
Well, are all five of us going to be there tomorrow night?
I am planning on being there unless something comes up.
Mrs. Latrell?
I'm currently a plaintiff in a lawsuit which appealed the decision of the zoning board appeals because it was our belief that they overreached their authority in issuing a special permit. So, I think to avoid appearance of conflict, I will not be there tomorrow.
I think it's important, I think we try to say this every time we discuss this. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the planning board has clearly stated that- has clearly stated that our concerns are not the merits of the project. Our concerns are not the actions of the ZBA relative to the 40B 180-unit, nine-point-something-acre parcel. I believe the Board feels that the ZBA has acted within its full authority to grant the waivers relative to the 40B part of the project.
I certainly agree with that.
I also believe that we've stated several times in public that we fully respect, and I think looking down the table, like, and maybe even go beyond like, Town Counsel. He's served this town well for many, many years, and hopefully for many, many more. He's given us fabulous advice over the years, and I don't think our opinion relative to the highly respected Town Counsel would ever change. However, we've stated before that he has been guiding the ZBA through this process, and it would be appropriate to, and hopefully beneficial, to get an independent counsel to guide the Planning Board. And I just can't, I know that that's, it's in no way disrespectful to our Town Counsel. And I believe that if it's possible that it would reinforce what the ZBA has done and reinforce Town Counsel's role in what's been done. And as you stated a minute ago, Phil, if that's what independent counsel does, reinforce the actions that have been taken, then the Planning Board would, I think, would feel that the rules have been followed, and there's nothing we can do about it. And we'll just do the best we can with what's left for the Board to do relative to the project. I think we've also stated many times that we're not opposed to the project. We're not trying to kill the project. Just want to make sure that that's, again, made clear. I believe that by getting an independent counsel, it would certainly help the process, and I would hope that it would be actually welcomed by the proponent and by Town Counsel and the other Town Boards, so that we're sure that we're moving this huge project in the right direction, using the proper authorities. There's a current example, it's concurrent right now in Sudbury, where the voters, based on my reading of the paper, that voters have approved an independent counsel relative to a 40B in Sudbury. And certainly Google that and read up on it. And again, it's similar, it's not the same exactly, but it's similar in that Sudbury's Town Counsel has been guiding the ZBA, and there's been a number of people in Sudbury that feel that an independent counsel would take the pressure off Town Counsel in guiding the Selectmen and the residents of Sudbury to make sure that, again, that the procedures and the actions are proper, and that all the voices are being heard. Did you want to say something, Mr. Stein?
You know what, Mr. Chairman? I really think you did a good job just then of articulating exactly why I voted in support of this pursuit of special counsel. With all due respect to Town Counsel, as you articulated, his role has been advising the ZBA. And the one thing that I would add to your discussion is, this is an unprecedented project in terms of the scale and impact to the town of Southborough. We're talking about expanding the population by 10% as a result of this project. This does not set a precedent, in my opinion. It's a one-time, very unique, very special situation that if we do not do every possible diligence and review using all tools and resources, we would be remiss in our duties as a Planning Board. Thank you for stating that so clearly, Mr. Chairman.
Well, okay, then, is there any other discussion on that? I think from the statements that have been made, the feedback that we've received over the last several months from comments that we've made in these public meetings, our concerns about the overreaching. And I just, I think that we can submit, I think as Mr. Mills said, you know, keep it simple, but we have to be prepared. That's why I asked who was going to be there tomorrow, because we might want to keep it simple, and, you know, not a highly-defined scope of work beyond which special counsel would not go. We also don't want to make it a wide-open, free-for-all research project either. But I think that the way that Mr. Jenks spoke, we can craft a small handful of questions, and then if the Selectmen have questions, want more details, then we'll have to speak to it tomorrow night.
I did actually prepare a few item bullet points, which if you would prefer that we discuss it tomorrow or not at all, that's fine. What's our feeling on that? Do we want me to go over that now or not? Not necessary. Fair enough. That's fine.
Okay, so after this being on TV, there's probably the questions or the information that the town administrator has been looking, will be looking for tomorrow for the Selectmen. Maybe they already have it if they're tuned in here tonight, but we'll certainly do that. I will submit what I think we asked here as far as overreaching, and what the limits and so on are, and state that, and submit that, and then they'll be able to start with that, and they can ask questions beyond, or advise us beyond that. But I certainly hope that it's realized that if we sit here and do nothing, having all the concerns that we have, and we do nothing about it, we're not doing our job. And I think that we hope that the Selectmen get that message that if there are such concerns that they allow us to get the resources to properly guide us and address our concerns with an independent counsel.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
You were all set with Joe.
Well, Mr. Scow has been working. Do you want to discuss his general role at this point?
It's up to you, Jesse, how you want to do it. He's here. I don't necessarily need, you know, if you don't think it's within...
Mr. Scow, do you feel comfortable coming up and discussing what you've been doing for us? Come on up. So just to, I'll give a little bit of background. The results of the deed research project were presented at a joint meeting with the Open Space Commission by Mass Audubon. They've assembled a database of the subdivisions in town and basically tying together the decisions with the recordation of the proper restrictions and such at the registries of deeds. And what Mr. Scow here has been working on on behalf of the working group is essentially a quality control review of the work by Mass Audubon. And we are very eager and excited to hear your report.
This, Joe, this is a draft?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we don't need a whole lot of detail if it's a draft, because it could change. And has this been reviewed by Mr. Stein? Or other members of the working group?
No, that's what I want to, I want to show him something tonight.
All right. So I just want to make sure that the public knows that this is a draft. Sounds like a, well, knowing your work, it's probably not a rough draft, but it's a draft, and it's subject to review and change. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Scow?
Okay, so I have a quality control check of the entire database, and so that just covers what I found without more mistakes in the database with the hyperlinks. So I don't know how you guys want to go through that and fix it. I have it all in a little packet.
So, Joe, could you talk about, you know, how many you found and what the natures of the errors were?
The, I don't know the exact number of mistakes there were. The mistakes were all either that the document that was supposed to be linked in the database was the wrong document, or the link just wasn't there, so it didn't link to any document at all. So like, some of the problems were that instead of linking to a plan or a deed, it would link to maybe a summary or vice versa. So maybe they just got confused, and they put the wrong document in the wrong position in the database. And then there's a couple that were just, they didn't link to any document at all, but even though they had a link in the database. So those need to be fixed.
When you say linked to a document, where is the document physically?
Yeah, I talked about that a little bit in this summary. Don't want to go over that right now?
Can you answer that?
Yeah, so the hyperlink documents are stored on a Google Drive. And a Google Drive is a virtual drive, so it's stored like, we don't know, it's just somewhere. But the drive is controlled, or it was created by Mass Audubon. So I'm assuming they have the password and access to that drive. So I was suggesting that we store the documents on a hard drive somewhere here, so we can have access to them.
So somebody collected the physical documents?
Oh, I'm talking about the scanned documents. The physical documents, I'm not sure.
Well, somebody had to scan them.
Yeah, they were collected from here and from Worcester, the Registry of Deeds. So I'm not sure if they sent them back, or they maybe kept them in a, like, some sort of file or cabinet or something like that.
Mr. Jenks, just to be clear, what Mass Audubon has done is assembled portable document files of publicly-recorded forms, such as plans, decisions, deeds, et cetera. So I'm not sure what the Registry of Deeds does with the actual original hard copies of these types of documents, but we are strictly talking about digital storage at this point.
Today, the Registry of Deeds sends them back to the person who filed them and keeps only PDF or perhaps some other format.
Yep. Yeah, so that was the next thing that was in the project, was going over what's the next step for maintaining the database. And so then I was saying that in order to make changes to the database or just like fix these problems, I think the Audubon, Mass Audubon should transfer control of the Google Drive, or we could create our own Google Drive. That'd be a lot more work, because they've already done everything, put all the documents online. So they could just, I don't know if they've already done that, actually given us the password and the... Do you guys know that? Have they given us anything?
I think that they wanted to transfer control of it to us, and I don't think we've gotten there yet.
Yeah.
We have not. And certainly, one of the questions is, what do we do with the next subdivision in terms of adding this information and, you know, enhancing this collection of work securely?
I think that's why we need control, so we can edit it.
Yeah, so if we have control, then we can upload our own, like, documents to the database, and then we can make new additions to the Excel spreadsheet. And then I'm assuming that you're going to be uploading the spreadsheet, like, to the website, so it can be publicly accessed.
Well, that's certainly something that the working group has to discuss. Security is, you know, clearly a major concern, because we wouldn't want incorrect or manipulated data to be put out there on the town website. So that's certainly something we'd be looking for a recommendation on in terms of how to present this to the public and have public access to it while maintaining the integrity of the security.
Yes. Well, I mean, if we're uploading the file onto the website, we would be the only ones to make, to be able to make changes to it, since we're uploading it. When people download it on their computers, they would just receive the information. They wouldn't be able to make changes to it. And if we have control of the Google Drive, then all the changes in the digital documents would also be controlled by us. So I mean, concerning security, we would have complete control, I think. Or I mean, as far as you could with that type of system.
So, Mr. Scow, that's great work, and I really appreciate your attention to this project. The working group would really benefit from a detailed write-up of everything that we've discussed, especially really precise notation on errors and things to be corrected. Do you think that that's something that you could prepare for us this week and perhaps have ready for us in seven days, by a week from today?
Yep.
So that that can be distributed to the working group? Very good. Thank you, sir. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So that was really a referral back to the planners' report.
I'm still getting the hang of this, sir.
I just want to make sure that what we had here was on the agenda. So, I thought I heard a motion earlier.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? No in favor? Five to zero. Good night.